Good evening, I'm calling to order this special city council meeting. Today is September the third and it is 6:32 PM. Um, just a reminder because we haven't done a all virtual in a while.
You muted councillor.
President Wondolowski, you're muted right now.
President Wondolowski, you're muted.
First off, this meeting is being recorded by the city council and GCTV nine. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time.
You might want to ask them if they're recording to unmute themselves and make it make a statement.
And if you are recording, you can unmute yourself. There we go. If you are recording, you can unmute yourself.
I am recording, please. Is my mic working?
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call of members. Clerk Scott?
Yep. Councillor Golub?
Here.
Councillor Gordon?
Here.
Councillor Mastertataro?
Here.
Councillor Bottomley?
Here.
Councillor Bullock?
Here.
Councillor Williams?
Here.
Councillor Perry?
Here.
Councillor Healy informed us that he was unable to attend tonight. Councillor Brown?
Here.
Vice President Garrett?
Present.
Councillor Minhaus?
Here.
Councillor Taronzo?
Yeah, here.
President Wondolowski?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I just wanted to.
We lost you again. Audio.
Lost her again.
You muted.
I think we're getting the audio through Kathy. Are you guys in the same room?
Kathy is unmuted. I'm not sure why Laura can't hear us, though.
Yeah, neither both of them.
Did it mute again? Try that.
So I just wanted to lay out that the purpose of this special meeting is to iron out the legal issues that have come up regarding the initiative. We simply just didn't have time at the between the August meeting and when the petition was submitted to get all of the legal guidance that we needed to make sure that the question is clear to the voters. So that is what we're doing tonight. We have our city attorney Quinn here with us as well as John Marigan, who is the. Oh. My. I hope you got to hear me. For some reason, mine keeps muting and unmuting, so I apologize. So I will take a motion to suspend the rules.
Clerk Scott, if you're unmuted when Laura is also unmuted, there's a really bad echo. So if you could cease mute as long as we can hear her, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Can you hear her now?
I'm gonna try again. Can you hear?
Yes, but can you start from the top because we missed everything?
Fantastic. I'll be really good at it now. Just wanted to state that the purpose of this special meeting is to iron out the legal issues that have come up regarding the citizens' petition. We simply just didn't have enough time between when the petition came in and our August meeting to get all of the legal guidance that we needed. So this meeting is to make sure that we've got the guidance and to make sure that the question is clear for the voters. So we've got our attorney here, Attorney Quinn, the city attorney, as well as John Marigan, who is our petitioner who submitted the ballot initiative. So that is what's before us. There will be five minutes for Mr. Marigan to share with the council why this initiative and any of the background. Councillors can ask some questions and then we'll have time for Attorney Quinn to brief us as well. And then we have two motions before us.
Laura, can I ask a question? So we seem to be having a little bit of trouble with audio. So if I could have Councillor Garrett, Vice President Garrett, can you let me know when you hear Laura talking? And if she stops because I'm having trouble, we're getting feedback, we're all in the same. Laura and I are in the same room and I want to test some things. Would that be possible?
Sure. I don't know if you heard Councillor Gordon a minute ago, but it seems to be when your audio is on Clerk Scott and Laura is speaking, that's when there's like this echo that happens. And so I don't know which microphone you folks are using to pick up. Is it just one microphone for both of you? Is that what's happening?
No, so I'm not sure. So I'm I'm gonna test a few things, but I'm gonna keep talking. So just let me know if you can't hear me.
Okay.
And then we're gonna do the same with President Wondolowski. So I'm talking now. Does it happen to cut out? Can you still hear me talking or did I cut out?
You did not cut out. I could hear you.
Okay, so I'm gonna test one other thing on my end. I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm gonna cut out.
Cannot hear you.
Okay, so Laura, can you do the same thing because I'm having trouble over here? So if Laura, you could just kind of sing us a little tune?
Oh, gladly. What do you guys want to hear?
We can hear the people sing.
Buffalo Girls?
Free Bird.
Could you hear that?
Sing Free Bird.
Did President Wondolowski cut out?
No.
Okay. Try it again, President Wondolowski.
Okay, so I will take a motion from page three.
I will make the motion because my microphone is on. The that the city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council waive the rule of procedure. Number eight, order and disposition of business to allow the agenda items to be taken out of order. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
Was that Councillor Taronzo?
That was one of them, yeah.
Okay, all right, we have to do a roll call.
All right, I'm totally on here. On the motion to waive the rules, Councillor Golub?
Yes.
Councillor Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Mastertataro?
Yes.
Councillor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councillor Bullock?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Councillor Minhaus?
Yes.
Councillor Taronzo?
Yeah.
And does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously. The rules or procedure are waived.
Thank you so much. So thank you, John, for being here as the chair of the referendum petition to share your concerns regarding the ballot language and anything else you want to share with the council. We've got you've got five minutes on the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity to address this body. I think, you know, I want to first say that, you know, this is something I wasn't looking forward to, but you know, as a lifelong resident of this community and a history of standing up for this community. Back in my early years as a selectman, we had fought to say Greenfield has done its fair share. There was a development. We're now solar villages when I was a selectman. And we as selectmen blocked a developer's request to put in units up there that were different than solar village, I might say. We blocked them by by not allowing them to connect to our water and sewer systems. And, you know, they were gonna sue us, but under 40B, we were 40B community. We're 15% almost of our housing stock. And they had no position against us. So, you know, the people that want to say it's a NIMBY issue for me, it's not a NIMBY issue. It's a community issue. And I would just like to let people know why we're here. We're here because of a vote on August 20th of this body that took a referendum provision and altered it to create a yes position. Yes, to allow the mayor to sell the property on Hope Street, when in fact, the yes provision should be to rescind your vote of the city council, plain and simple. And it was debated for a long time. Many members had questions. Many members wanted legal counsel on it. But it continued to move forward with a handful of people. And it's very troubling that we're undermining our democracy, our charter. And, you know, the back and forth between Attorney Quinn, the clerk's office and myself was unnecessary. And it's plain and simple. This goes before the voters. You up or vote, you rescind it or not. You don't have, after that point, you don't have the ability to manipulate the language. And that's what happened. And it's really kind of a sad day in Greenfield's history that we're doing this. And, you know, there's a lot of issues that have come out of this besides just being about a parking lot. Many people I've never known have called me and requested to be friends through Facebook or through other friends that have asked for my number. And the amount of information I have gathered and learned is staggering. And, you know, one such issue is the capacity of the sewer treatment facility. That facility has had discharges in excess of two and a half million or just shy of two and a half million gallons of untreated sewage in the past three years. And it's not just one mayor's fault. It's the fault of many mayors. And the fact that we continue to just plow ahead and tax our infrastructure without planning, without understanding our infrastructure is not right. And I have a 37-page report from the through a public records request from the Department of Environmental Protection that has outlined the staggering issues at the facility on Deerfield Street. And it's just, you know, it's the kind of issue I've been trying to raise. I've been trying to talk to people, but nobody wants to talk to me at City Hall. So before I submitted the petition, I asked for some meetings, but they weren't accepted. They were shunned away. And here we are. So but thank you again for the time to address this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marigan. Appreciate that. Councillors, any folks have questions? And I just want to open by saying the language that we voted on last month was based on precedence of two former, two previous referendums that came to us from Clerk Scott. So it wasn't the council rewriting the yes versus no. So I just wanted to set that record straight.
Thank you.
Any questions? Councillor Golub?
Yeah, and just for community members who are following along, just to make that very clear, to make sure that the facts are clear. If anyone has doubt about what happened at the last city council meeting, I would invite you to go back and look at the agenda and to look at the recording. Because we were voting on what came out of the clerk's office and what was approved by the attorney. We didn't, there was no change of yes or no. We didn't even know that that was a possibility when it came to us, when it came to the floor. The only change that was made was to strike through language that would, that we were concerned may make it so that in perpetuity, the city wouldn't be allowed to sell that land. So for anyone that the accusation of manipulation is just categorically incorrect. And for anyone who has that doubt, I would invite you to go back and look at last month's meeting.
We have looked at last month's meeting very carefully and clearly you were the architect of the amendment, the further amendment, which should have never been.
Thank you, Mr. Marigan. We're not gonna unfortunately be able to do a debate, but.
Well, that can happen later.
Sure. I welcome it and just invite community members to decide that for themselves. I think it's pretty clear.
Councillor Garrett?
I mean, the offer the debate, if you, if there's interest in having a public forum where folks can talk about questions, I absolutely would love to see that happen. And so if, you know, you have our contact information, obviously, as public officials, but I would love to have further conversations where the public can hear different voices. You mentioned the, so the charter language, I spent some time looking at the language in the charter. And I don't think I fully agree with you that it's absolutely clear. And so, you know, regardless, the first, the main point I just want to make is the goal of the council, as far as this process is concerned, is making sure that people have a chance to have their voices heard. And you put in, folks working with you on this referendum, put in a tremendous amount of work to get the signatures. It was impressive. You know, you guys, obviously, you know, there's lots of folks who you spoke to. And, you know, this is a, we're a democracy. And so there is absolutely nothing that we are trying to do that is in the face of that. I do have a question about some of the language you've used to describe our decision last month. And so there was an email that was sent to Attorney Quinn on August 24th, 2025, where you said that our decision-making process was arbitrary and capricious. And that's for folks that aren't aware, that is legal language that has specific definitions, in particular, capricious. And I had to look this up. I'm looking at the Cornell Law School Legal Information Institute definition. The arbitrary and capricious contact is willful and unreasoning action without consideration regard for the facts and circumstances. And so you've heard from a couple of councillors that we had 48 hours to read the legal advice and the answers to questions that have been asked to Attorney Quinn, which you very ably answered. And so to accuse us of being arbitrary and capricious, to me, that reads like the foundation setting of a lawsuit, you know. And so I'm a little disturbed by that. And I just would like to, you know, frankly, I'm here to listen. Like, if you believe our actions are arbitrary and capricious, I'd like to hear what threshold we hit and what actions we took, especially in light of the context you were given about us not choosing yes or no. Like, we were handed this language by the attorney. It followed the precedent of library votes. Like, it literally was the same as library vote, which was a referendum. And that petitioner's committee did not have an objection. It doesn't mean that you're not right. You know, and I'm looking forward to hearing what our attorney says, because I am not aware. That, you know, is 100% true, and I know you are. But if you could have enlightened us as far as what hits that threshold, I would be interested to know.
I am not a lawyer. I'm fortunate to be a family of lawyers that advised me on different issues over my lifetime. But, you know, it was clear to many of us that this further amendment was offered by Councillor Golub and many councillors had concerns about it. They had concerns that it hadn't been seen by legal counsel. Issues that, you know, people had questions about. And instead, it just kind of kept going forward. And for me, that was problematic. And, you know, whether it's, you know, a matter of debate, whether it's arbitrary and capricious, but to me, it felt underhanded. I really felt that way. Whether it's, you can take it to that level of arbitrary and capricious, it was a long memo I sent to Attorney Quinn, you know, stating our opinion. And we felt it was illegal. It was wrong. And it was not what the charter called for.
Well, thank you for that answer. I appreciate it. No, it was helpful in clarifying.
Thank you.
I have further questions, but I don't want to be the only one asking them. So I'm happy to wait until other folks have stuff to say.
Great. Councillor Bullock? And then we can come back to Councillor Golub, or sorry.
Yeah, I have two main questions. One is, I'm wondering the language for this, the way that it was presented from our legal counsel and from the clerk was on the agenda within our five-day window. And so, Mr. Marigan, I'm wondering why you didn't come to that meeting to speak to the language on August 20th? And why was the, why was the issue only brought up after, as I think it was Councillor Golub that just brought up? We didn't flip the language in the meeting. That's not what happened. Can I just finish my sentence? We, what we did was what we have authority to do under the charter, which is review and approve the ballot language. And the language was put on the agenda in the order of yes and no, which is what you're actually taking issue with, if I understand correctly. And so I'm wondering why you didn't raise this issue at the August 20th meeting. And then I also have a follow-up question.
I'll tell you why. Because I didn't expect you to take a further amendment and try to change the language. Under seven seven, when a question is submitted to the council for action to the voters, you can manipulate the language. Under seven eight, you cannot. So.
If we had accepted the language as in, as was, on the August 20th agenda, even, even though the yes and no was flipped not to your liking, you wouldn't have challenged that language?
No, because thereafter, it becomes an issue for the petitioner's committee and the city attorney to figure out, to come to terms in agreement with. You don't have a role after you vote. Honestly, read the charter.
I, oh, I read the charter. I have one more question, though. So you have, I've brought, I've heard from you when I spoke with you directly and others, that there is a potential for for market rate rent to go in in a building just adjacent to this lot that we're talking about? I'm wondering if you have any financial connection?
None at all.
Okay, thank you. I've had questions from people, and so I felt like it was important to ask.
All right, thank you.
Any other councillors with questions at this point? Otherwise, I'll go to Councillor Garrett. Councillor Garrett?
Sure. And so I am looking at the charter, you know, just speaking of reading the charter. I have read the charter as well, and I think everybody on the council has. The first section of the charter, in Article One, there's a section on distribution of powers. And the section 14 is the powers of the city. And I'm just gonna read this briefly, so forgive me. Subject only to express limitations, the exercise of any power or function by municipal government and the Constitution and general laws of the Commonwealth is the intention and purpose of the voters of Greenfield to adopt from the charter, secure for themselves and their government all the powers that is possible to cure as fully as completely, as though each such power specifically individually enumerated herein. So you've made a claim that the city council has no power in this context. And again, I have no interest in thwarting the will of the voters or the referendum committee or manipulating the votes or playing shadow games just in general. Like, that is not what we are interested in doing. None of us, we're all, none of us have time for that. But I'm looking at the charter, and it is not clear, the language here. Section 78B, this is the, it modifies, instead of being a clear process on its own, it modifies section 77, as I know you're aware. And I'm just gonna read this for members of the public that are listening, just to, not the whole thing, because I don't want to bore people to tears, and I have a question. Subsection A of section 77 describing the manner of petition is filed. Subsection B of subsection 77, providing for referral to attorney. Subsection F of said subsection 77. And then I'm skipping to the bottom. And this is where I'm actually gonna just, well, I'll get through this. The words measure or part thereof protested against shall be deemed to replace the word measure in said subsection A, B, F, and G of said section 77, each time it appears. And the word referendum should be deemed to replace the word initiative. And it goes on. And so if you take that all together, and I actually wrote this out, it comes up with a sentence that doesn't make any sense. And there's another provision in section, in the petition section. Form of the question, the ballot use and voting shall be containing question and substantial to the following form. And, you know, I know that you have your point about the role of the petitioner's commission, of which there absolutely is a piece. But the way the charter tells us to write this, if it's a referendum, is shall the following measure or part thereof protested against, which was proposed by voters in a referendum petition, take effect? That isn't a logical construction. You're asking us to rescind a vote, which is valid. And, you know, you have an absolute right, and the citizens of the city have an absolute right to rescind our votes. But we have to change that to actually do what you want. You know, and so the city lawyer has to change that. So to say, there's, you know, the charter is clear as day is absolutely not true. And so I just, I guess my question is, do you accept that the city attorney has to make changes to this to even get to the results? Does that make sense to you, Mr. Marigan?
Yeah, no, it does. And, you know, I'll just say upfront that, you know, when we started this process and trying to even adopt a language or craft a language for the petition, it was confusing.
I believe it, yeah.
You know, I think there are a lot of parts of that charter that need to be revisited to make it, you know, friendly to our constituents and to our citizens. If they want a petition or referendum with the council, then they need to have it in plain terms. Yeah, I literally had to have lawyers look at it to draft the language for the petition to get it right. So I couldn't agree with you.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And so I just, again, the, the language of arbitrary and capricious, and I appreciate we've gone through this already. But it's just, the will of the council is not ill will towards the citizens of Greenfield. And it is not against the democratic process. We were given, you know, advice, and our job as a council is to fill in the gaps, you know, where there isn't clear language. And so that's really what I'm trying to, you know, assert here. Thank you for your response. I appreciate it. And, you know, honestly, I couldn't agree more about the charter language needing clarifying.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you so much for joining us. I really appreciate getting your perspective. So thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions, so I'd like to turn to, oh, wait. Councillor Golub?
Yeah, I I just, I'm curious to hear a little bit more about why this is an, I've never met you before. This is an opportunity to hear more from you. Why this project is so upsetting to you? I know I heard you say you've lived here your whole life and have worked hard for people here. And what are the issues that are really concerning to you about this project?
You know, what's concerning to me is our downtown. I have talked to business owners who have moved out of town. And, you know, I, and I'll tell you, from the opioid task force standpoint, it created programs 12 years ago. We had no beds. We had no outpatient programs. And BHN on Federal Street, I'll take credit for. And many people, you know, pointing fingers at me because of what they feel frustration is. But there's been just this kind of overkill of services in terms of taking and putting housing in our downtown like we're planning to do is just destructive. And it, you know, planning involves a balance. It involves a balance of office and retail and commercial and housing and open space. And it just, we're not doing that. And I'm a little bit upset that the, you know, Franklin Regional Council or Franklin Regional Housing Authority with their development arm now is in Greenfield. Greenfield has a housing authority with a development arm. They were established in the early 70s to take on regional housing on a regional basis. Paul Douglas, the former director, when I was on the HUD Committee in the legislature, would come to me and he'd say, John, hey, we're working on this in Gil, which we put a great project in Gil. I'm working on this in Irving. But they weren't in Greenfield because there were opportunities, you know, with developers and LLCs that I don't know who are behind them all. But believe me, we're doing our homework to figure out who the players are on Main Street. And it's, that's what's bothering me, yeah.
Councillor Garrett? Uh, Counselor Garrett?
Thank you.
I just have, just a general question. You know, one of the phrases that I use commonly, you know, is that there's a housing crisis. I, you know, I'm a high school teacher. I have students who are constantly worried. You know, one of the things they ask is like, you know, will I ever be able to afford a house, you know, amongst other teenage worries, right? So I'm curious to know, do you think we have a housing crisis? And if not, why not? And if yes, what does that mean to you? Because I, you know, just as far, you know, this is, as Counsel Golub said, I, I have not had the chance to meet you up until this point. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, someday in person. But I, I would want to know what is your, your kind of frame of reference here?
So, you know, I know there's an affordability. I know we need affordable housing, but you know, with the access to the state bond bill, which was just passed in twenty twenty-four, the housing bond bill, you know, everything comes with strings attached. And, and it's not, you know, always the most beneficial. Any developer that develops that Hope Street lot is going to need state subsidy. So people want to say, oh, we're going to do market rate housing there? You know, I lived through the courthouse and thankfully, you know, was able to secure the courthouse in terms of its, uh, construction, seventy million dollars invested into our community that otherwise would have gone to Boston or east, east of us. You know, the, the, the complications with that lot are tremendous. To the, you know, the retaining wall that runs all along Hope Street, take a walk up it. Every fifteen or twenty feet, there's a drain pipe coming out of that retaining wall from down under that parking lot. And the feasibility study that was suggested by your consultant fifteen months ago suggested looking at that and, but citing doing a feasibility study. But instead, we go right to an RFP. That's what bothers me about that process. If, if something went there, I'd be okay with it. I, I just think that, you know, we have done a lot. And, and to say that, you know, it doesn't matter that a hundred and forty years old employees at the courthouse don't need parking, or the three hundred plus uh, that, that court users that come in that building every day on a busy day, on an average day, a hundred and fifty to two hundred people come in that building every day. And, and as been pointed out, the, the DMH building, on the top of the lot, they don't need parking. So, you know, it's, housing is a break even proposition at best. With taxes, with, with whatever sort of, uh, formula you want to use. A parking lot of that sort probably would bring in two hundred thousand dollars a year. That's a positive, you know, step forward for the community who needs money.
Um, I have Counselor Bullock. I, I know that, um, Attorney Quinn, you had your hand up. I, is it germane to this? Because we'll get back to you and.
Well, I was just going to say that, I mean, I think this is interesting discussion. It, it's kind of going a little bit of field from the agenda items for today for the special meeting. So I just wanted to, to kind of make that point.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Counselor Bullock, and then, uh, I think we'll move to Attorney Quinn.
Yeah, my questions also veer as couns, uh, as, um, the attorney was, was saying. So I don't, do you do you want me to stay on task? Because then skip me.
Let's see, yeah, let's, let's stay on task, because I think we'll have an opportunity to, uh, debate this issue in, in a different forum. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. Um, and, uh, Attorney Quinn would love your guidance, um, on the, the two questions that were really brought by John. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Can everybody hear me? Great, thank you. Um, so, yeah, I had a, uh, very good conversation with Mr. Merrigan, a couple of conversations with him. I'm glad I finally see him, I'm able to recognize him now and recognize his voice. Place his voice with his face there. Um, and I also had a number of email exchanges. So, um, you know, I, I, I knew, uh, what the issues were, uh, which prompted me to request a special meeting. Uh, I, I will say that contrary to a discussion I had, um, with Mr. Merrigan, that some, somewhat, sometime earlier, I, I do think that the council, uh, is empowered by the city charter uh, to participate in the formulation of the ballot question. Uh, I, he and I talked about this. I, I disagreed with his position that he took that the city council shouldn't get involved. I think it, it, it should get involved because of the language in seven, eight, A of the charter, which basically states that if the measure is not rescinded, the city council shall provide for the submission of the question for determination by the voters. And I know that consistent with the practice, with a number of, uh, past citizens' referendum petitions, I believe, um, that's what the council, the council has played that role. So I believe the council is, uh, does have, uh, the responsibility and the task under the charter to, uh, uh, you know, conduct this inquiry and to really formulate, try to formulate the, uh, the actual ballot question. Um, the secondary issue, though, is the, it's really a technical drafting one, and that is what should the wording of the, of the, uh, ballot question be? Um, I did approve the original wording that was approved by, uh, the city council back in August. Um, it was consistent with prior ballot questions that the city council had approved, for example, relating to the library, funding for the library. Um, I will say that the language, and I think everybody agrees, the language of the charter, um, especially section seven, eight, is a bit fuzzy. It's unclear. Um, I, I will say, uh, without repeating everything that, uh, Counsel Garrett had mentioned, I think he made some great points about the charter language. I, I will say that there's really two formulations. There's the formulation the city council, uh, approved back in August, which is uh, basically, you know, shall the following measure that was approved by the city council, which is proposed to be rescinded, take effect? That's the, that was the language that the city council approved. The alternative language, which I believe Mr. Merrigan also approved i- in discussions with me, was the, uh, language that is basically, that's on, on the agenda tonight, and that is shall a citizen's referendum petition that proposes to rescind the following city council measure take effect? They both are equally clear, I think. They say the same thing. I will say that that latter formulation about shall the citizen's referendum petition take, uh, take, uh, take effect is more in line with the, uh, albeit imperfect language in the charter. Because as Counselor Garrett pointed out, if you, if you apply the literal language in the charter to the ballot question that should be posed, it is shall the following measure or part thereof protested against which was proposed by voters in a referendum petition take effect? A little bit unclear, but there's an argument, a kernel of an argument, that the ballot for, under the charter uh, for a referendum issue should be whether you, you're judging the referendum, should the referendum take effect? The referendum that proposes to rescind the following city council measure. So it's, it's, it's again, equally clear optional language formulations of the ballot question. I do think that the latter language I just described is, it, an argument could be made, it's more in line with what the charter, the imperfect language of the charter directs. Um, that's, I would recommend that the city council, uh, use that language. Um, even though they're both equally clear, uh, formulations, when voters go and read both both ballot questions, they'll understand what they're voting, yes and no to. Um, so, um, that's my basic, uh, observation. Um, a- again, the language, as everybody's pointed out, is unclear. I'm just trying to make some kind of reason out of language that's imperfect and to try to guide the, uh, guide the city council, uh, accordingly. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to take any questions about that. Again, it's, this issue has never been brought up before, because in past referendum petitions, it's never been an issue. Right? The city council has formulated the ballot question along lines that it did back in August for this particular issue. It's never been an issue. But when you take a look at the charter language and trying to kind of make sense of it, uh, imperfect language, I think that, um, the question shall a citizen's referendum petition that proposes to rescind the following city council measure should be really, um, is probably, there's a better argument that that should be the introductory language to the ballot question.
Counselors, any questions for Attorney Quinn? Uh, I have Counselor Toronto?
Um, I think it's pretty clear, um, especially with Attorney Quinn's, uh, follow up there that we can move forward to the two motions that are in front of us today and you, I mean, flip flopping the, the language so it, it more meets our uh, quasi broken charter language seems, I don't know, obvious, uh, to me. Um, and I think we should, could just move on to the the motions at, uh, at hand. And if we have to rescind one to pass the other, um, we've done formalities like this in the past where we've had like, you know, a bill for like fourteen hundred dollars. Um, it's, it's going to do the same thing no matter what. So I don't, I don't really know how much more to um, how much more we can really go over it. It, it's, it's going to be the same either way. And, and this just seems like the easiest path to, to there.
Uh, Counselor Williamson, I just want to caution counselors that since we don't have a motion, um, this really should be questions for Attorney Quinn and not the discussion of the motions yet.
Love it. So, um, to Attorney Quinn, so you're saying that the language that you're proposing, uh, now uh, is, meets the standard of the charter best. And therefore, my assumption would be, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that if we go with this language that is closest to the charter language, that that would be the most solid way of going forward. Because I, I want to make sure, damn sure that this referendum question, once it's done, that there isn't a re, that, that there's no need to have a redoing or to face any problems with it after the vote has been taken. So is that, is that what you're recommending? That we use this new language to avoid any future problem?
Yeah, I mean, I think the language is clear. It, it, it has the backing, if I, if I do say so. I think I can talk for Mr. Merrigan. Uh, I think Mr. Merrigan and I chatted about it. Uh, he has a role to play as chair of the petitioners committee and, and the, and the discussion of this issue. So it approved, it's approved by, he approves it. Um, I think it's, it's, it's relatively clear, especially if there's a description of the summary, what a yes vote means and a no vote means. Uh, it should be very clear to voters. E, a- as equally clear as the other, uh, language that, um, the ballot, uh, language, uh, ballot question language that was accepted back in August by the council.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Brown?
My question is, how long is this ballot question binding for?
Well, uh, that's a good question. I know that was an issue that was brought up, I think, in the earlier meeting of the council. Um, this, what this does is this, um, this vote, um, you know, if, if hypothetically speaking, the voters vote, you adopt this ballot question, then the voters vote, and they vote to rescind, right? Let's say the ultimate, the ultimate decision is that the measure is rescinded. Um, that vote is directed at that specific measure that was passed by the council. Okay? So it's, it's a binding referendum, uh, referendum, uh, uh, decision. However, that doesn't bar the council in the future from considering a specific other measure. Okay? Then it becomes, at that point, it's not barred legally, but at that point, if the voters have weighed in, the council obviously has to take all that into consideration, right? When they're considering this issue perhaps, maybe, if they do, in the future sometime. I don't know if that, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Counselor Golub?
So President Madaloski, let me go, let me know if this goes too far afield, but I think that it's germane. Um, you, Attorney Quinn, you said that the council is empowered to vote on the referendum language. And for me, that, that assumes some type of choice. And when this question came forward, um, my thought was, I would love this to just pass through, like, not have to go to council. We may be empowered to, but the language says we shall vote on it. And so I brought that as we are required to vote on it, and we have the responsibility to do our due diligence with the language. And um, I know Al Norman and several others of us have worked on, worked on referendum and initiative language. Um, a couple of years ago, we almost got it to a place where we could all agree. We didn't put it forward yet. And now I'm realizing how much clearer this language needs to be. Um, and I'm wondering if there are other municipalities in which it would just be, for me, it would make sense that the, the citizen's language would go straight to the ballot through the clerk's office and and that this was not a decision that was, um, yeah, I mean, I might have been empowered, but it felt more like required we had to vote on it. And so I'm wondering, do you, are you familiar with, um, if that would be a possibility to just, if enough signatures are gathered, that it could just go straight to the ballot?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a couple of options. The, the most drastic option would be to amend the charter, to, to basically take out, you know, where the language talks about where the measure is not rescinded by the, of the city council, it shall provide for the submission. Maybe you think of other language, in- instead of, you know, the city council providing for the submission of the question, maybe, you know, that, that's, that's one change, the charter language you could consider. The other change is for the council to delegate, you know, eh, maybe delegate the responsibility to, to prepare the actual ballot question to its attorney, working in conjunction with the city, with the city clerk, for example. And, and, and in coordination with the, the chair of the petitioners committee. So there's, there's ways kind of around that, that you're still providing for the submission of the question, but you're, you're taking yourself out. In that latter instance, you're taking yourself out of the minutia of having to grapple with these issues of language, dritno drafting issues. I mean, I'm just, those are two offhand, uh, approaches that the council could consider in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, I think that, I, I was thinking about this today and talking with a couple of different people about it. I, I, I think that and it's been said a few times in this meeting that the chart, you know, the charter language is a lot, trying to interpret it um, as a citizen, as a city counselor. Um, we all can sometimes have different interpretations just between like two of us talking. I interpret it one way, someone interprets it another way. So I like the idea of, of clarifying. I know a charter change is difficult, um, but I, I think that something along the lines of like, if a citizen's petition or referendum is presented, that the clerk then works with those petitioners. But my real question is, like, is there concern that the language is differing from what the eight hundred people signed? Because that's actually what I keep thinking about is like, does Mr. Merrigan have the authority to change the language post signature? Um, is that what we're saying the charter allows, allows the attorney and us to do? Or and I, I think maybe I'm going back to his, like, initial concern. Um, but I think it's like, we're back to where the charter language, the, the charter process isn't super clear. And so I guess my question is, in the situation that we're in, allowing a change of language at all is allowed because of what the charter says?
Uh, well, I think, I, I, I think you're allowed to reconsider this issue, I think. You know, I mean, I, I don't think there's an issue about that. It, there's, there were objections made. You're allowed through the special meeting process to consider whether the language that was approved should be changed. So I, I don't see necessarily a problem in, with, with, with respect to that. Um, and, you know, as far as, um, you know, I, I, I do think that the chair of a petitioners committee of a successful referendum petition does have some input, should have some input, or it should be invited to have some input in the, in the, the wording of the ballot question. Um, at some point, though, it becomes, it's not really rocket science. It's either, you know, there's a measure that's been asked to be rescinded. So it's really just two, really just two possible ways to frame it. And we've kind of covered those options here. And so it becomes a matter of just what, what is more in line with the language of the charter. And that's where I think the city council And so it becomes a matter of just what, what is more in line with the language of the charter. And that's where I think the city council or the city clerk, you know, I'm thinking in the future, if you want to rely on the city clerk, together with the city attorney, with input from the Chair of the Petitioners Committee, they all have a, a, a role, could have a role to play to putting together a very clear, proper, or, or appropriate wording to it, to a, to a charter, to a ballot question that's arising from a, from a citizen's referendum petition. I hope that, hope that was clear.
It was. I think ideally for me, like, this should happen on the front end. And that's where things, things feel boggled, is that we're doing it on the back end.
I, I agree. I agree. It should happen in the front end. Yes.
Uh, Counselor Perry?
I just want to mention the fact that at the August twentieth meeting, when we started the conversation, the city clerk said, here's the, here it is. I wrote this based on previous referendums, and I ran to the city clerk, and this is the language that we think is appropriate. And so that discussion already happened before all this even started. You know, so we've been talking about stuff that was already presented as being legal. And then we decided, well, we don't like that. We're gonna change it. Now here, and now here we are, because we decided that we didn't re-agree with the clerk and the lawyer, we were gonna change it. And so to me, it, this seems like a waste of time, to tell you the truth.
Counselor Master Totoro, and then I think I want to move to the motion, if that's okay, because I, I think we're veering from just questions from the attorney.
Well, he took the words right out of my mouth. We rely on Attorney Quinn as our city's attorney to make the best recommendations for the city. And we can debate how this charter can get rewritten. It ain't gonna happen tonight. I, I propose we vote on these two motions and get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Minhaus, and, and then, and do you have a question for Attorney Quinn? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, so I just want to ask a clarifying question as to like, from Attorney Quinn, are you suggesting in your legal opinion, because I, I just want to make that clear for myself and others, are you suggesting in your legal opinion that we should move forward with the language in which the yes vote would rescind the city council measure authorizing the sale, and a no vote will uphold the city council measure authorizing the sale? Is that what you're saying? You're saying that would be more in line with the city charger, the charter, even though it is a little unclear? I just want to make that.
Yeah, that's basically what I'm saying, because the, the, the introductory language would be, you know, show a citizen's referendum petition that proposes to rescind the following measure take effect. And a yes vote would operate to rescind the measure that the city council measure. And you're correct, and the no vote would operate to uphold the city council measure.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bullock?
And just to be clear, because of what Counselor Perry said, that is the opposite of the language that we voted on last month. So I just want to be clear that the language that was put in front of us last month, and no, I know it was like no harm, no foul from, from the attorney's office, from the clerk's office, but I just want to be clear that we've now gone through a process that says changing it to go that a yes vote is to rescind and a no vote is to uphold is different than the language that was put in front of us at the August twentieth meeting. And so we're not actually changing language in regards to the motion that was made at the August twentieth meeting that took out the words allow and not allow, which is what there's been a lot of conversation about. What we're doing here is reversing the yes and the no, which was never on the table at August twentieth meeting. We were looking at language that had been given to us from the clerk's office and from the attorney that was reversed and had a no vote, would not allow the mayor, and a yes vote would. And so we're not discussing something that was in front of us and already, we're discussing a different thing that was approved after the fact.
John, I see your hand up. This is a council discussion, so I can't recognize you. I'm sorry. I don't know if, Attorney Quinn, if you had any comments?
Uh, no, no, I mean, I think everything that's, has to be said about this, or, you know, should be said about this has been said. And it, it's just a matter of trying to come up with clear language that can be argued to be in, in better alignment with, again, language in the charter, which can be very, very confusing. And so I, I, yeah, I, I think there's nothing wrong with what the council did last, last month. It was consistent with prior practice. An issue was brought up by Mr. Marigan, and so here we are. And you have my legal, you know, our legal opinion, my legal opinion, and and my recommendations as well. So happy to answer any further questions before you take any further steps.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion, which is page four. If somebody could read that motion for me. Uh, Counselor Mesut Totoro? You're muted.
He's muted, but I'm happy to read it.
I, I don't think I raised my hand, so.
Oh, sorry. I thought you did.
I'm happy to read it. I have it here.
Thank you, Counselor Bullock.
Uh, FY two six dash zero three five, the city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council rescind the following order voted during their regular meeting held on August twentieth, twenty twenty five. Order number FY two six dash zero three four. On August twentieth, twenty twenty five, the Greenfield City Council, on a motion by Counselor Healy, seconded by Counselor Garrett, it was by roll call nine, yes, zero, no, two abstentions, voted that the Greenfield City Council direct the following question to be placed upon the official ballot at the local general city election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty five. Ballot question, shall the following measure, which was proposed to be rescinded by voters in a citizen referendum petition, take effect? That the Greenfield City Council authorizes the mayor to sell fifty-three Hope Street, Assessor's Map fifty-two, Lot twenty-five, pursuant to the city council policy for the sale of city-owned land, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same? Yes, summary, a yes would uphold the city council vote above. No, summary, a no would rescind the city council vote above. Majority vote required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Williams? Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Garrett?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Attorney Quinn and Clerk Scott for all the hours and hours of work that have been put into this. And, you know, especially considering the difficulties of making sure, you know, we go through and do this properly. And, you know, I will be voting to rescind, and I'll be voting to accept the new language out of, you know, respect for the expertise of our city attorney. And I, and regardless of that, I also just want to take advantage of this as a chance to say, I'm incredibly proud of the vote the city council took. And I would do it again. I mean, frankly, this is one of the reasons I ran for office. And I told anybody who would listen that this is something that I thought should happen. And just one other final note about, I've heard the phrase, uh, what do you call it? A feasibility study come up over and over again? Part of the genius of the mayor's attempt to sell this is that if we get a request for proposals, it's on a private sector entity or a nonprofit or whomever decides to do it, to figure out if it's a feasible project or not. If we do a feasibility study ourselves, it's out of the taxpayer's pocket. And then we're subsidizing, you know, whatever entity we end up selling it to. So that is, I think, a really, yeah, I think that's an important detail, you know, who's gonna spend the money and where is it gonna end up benefiting? So that's my, that's my piece. And again, thank you, Attorney Quinn. Thank you, you know, Mr. Marigan, again, for showing up. It really was good to have a conversation in public rather than in the dark recess of the internet. And so I look forward to more of that.
Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, I will also be voting to rescind. To be honest with the, with the forty, I, I didn't even have the forty-eight hours. I didn't have an, I didn't have the attorney opinion in my inbox until like four PM the day of the council meeting. And so I think that it's, I'm, I, I am happy to rescind this vote and after very careful deliberation, go, go in another direction. And after reading the charter and reading the initial signatures that were given to the clerk's office. So, but I, I also just want to say that I've, I actually was able to meet with the economic development team at the cities, at, with the city, and a feasibility study was started on this and was, was paid for by grant funding. Not a completed one, but the, but what we would need for a developer to be interested. And so we keep saying that, but I just want to be clear that this is something that has been in the works for a while now. And, and there's been some, some feasibility already done through a community planning grant and a complete neighborhoods grant around pre-development work. So, but regardless, I, I want to just say thank you to the entire council for doing diligence on this over the last few weeks. And also to the citizens over the last two weeks who have really, especially in precinct five, who have really been willing to share their opinions and share that it's not such a cut and dry issue. And so I do think there's a lot of education and conversation that needs to happen about this.
Uh, Counselor Minhaus?
So there's a few things I'd just like to say. I think, one, it is important to follow process and obviously legal opinion that we receive. Also, I think it's, regardless of how on the council we might feel that some of our actions might come across to the public, I do think it's important that we maintain a image of, of representing the public and not working against them. And I think that there's like this idea, this sentiment in the public that feels like somehow this whole process was some kind of crafty shenanigans. And that, like, you know, I, I don't think perhaps that's true, but it's like there's this perception that that's potentially happened. So for that reason, and also for just to follow the legal opinion, just to make it clear to be like, hey, also, what's, I don't know who this person is in the Zoom chat, but I don't know if they can, I don't know what's going on with that. But, um, I think just to uphold the fact that they, yeah, um, just uphold the fact that we are a democratic body, and we're not working against the interest of, of any members of the public, regardless or not if we agree with them. Uh, we're not trying to manipulate the process in any sort of way. And to make that clear, um, I think let's, let's go with the, with Attorney Quinn's position.
And Counselor Master Totoro?
Can we call the question now, please?
Since you've said that, we gotta do it. So we're gonna move to a roll call.
I'm calling the question, Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro? Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously. The question is called, motion number twenty-six oh thirty-five is on the floor. And that is what we will be voting on now. Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Count, Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Epstein.
Counselor Toronto?
Also have seen.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
The motion passes by majority of nine votes in favor of repealing the question. The ballot question voted on August twentieth.
Okay, so now we move to the second motion. Is someone willing to read that for me? That's on page five.
I can read it.
Thank you.
Order number FY two six dash zero three six. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approve for submittal to the voters and directs the following question to be placed upon the official ballot for the local general city election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty five. Ballot question, shall a citizen's referendum petition that proposes to rescind the following city council measure approved on July sixteenth, twenty twenty five, take effect? That the Greenfield City Council authorize the mayor to sell fifty-three Hope Street, Assessor's Map fifty-two, Lot twenty-five pursuant to the city council policy for the sale of city-owned land, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same? Yes, summary, a yes vote would rescind the city council measure authorizing the sale. Summary, a no vote would uphold the city council measure authorizing the sale. Majority vote required.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, that was Counselor Williams. And I have Counselor Toronto?
I just wanted to point out, I abstained from the last one because I was not a part of the vote, uh, last month, but I will be voting on this portion of the measure as it is a new addition.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you. Um, sorry, I've been quiet tonight because of a, a bit under the weather, but I just want to say one more time that, you know, what happened last month was we got the language right before the meeting. You were trying to understand things in the meeting that, you know, we would have loved to do beforehand, but did not have time to do. And what did not happen last month was that we changed the language of the ballot question that was presented to us. And I just want to be very clear about that for members of the public, because I fully support the referendum process, I fully support the democratic process, you know, and the right of petitioners to have their question placed on the ballot. And I just want everyone to have the information they need, you know, to vote on that question and, and to be clear what they're voting on. So I'm, I'm happy to vote for the language as revised by Attorney Quinn, pardon me, and Mr. Marigan. Because, you know, if Attorney Quinn believes that that language is just as clear for the public, then great. Um, and, you know, that's all we want, is to make sure that people are clear on what their vote means, whichever side equals yes or no. So I'm happy to vote for this.
I'm raising my hand. Um, I too am happy to vote for this. It, I, I was fine with it the other way. My goal-
My goal is for it to be clear to the voters. You know, I respect the referendum petition, um, process. I think it's an important part of our democracy. And I also voted for this originally because I support the mayor's plan. Bec- because there were public meetings and a thoughtful plan for the property that will benefit Greenfield. Um, I think it's important for tax revenue, um, to bring in market rate housing and also to have something that revitalizes our downtown. But at the end of the day, um, I'm fine with this language moving forward, so thank you.
I don't see anybody ra- else raising their hands, so, um, let's move forward with the vote.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus? Counselor Minhaus?
Sir, uh, said yes.
Thank you. Counselor Toronto?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
And the motion passes by majority.
Right. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I know this was not originally on your schedules. I also want to thank all the members of the public, um, who showed up for this important issue. And to, um, Attorney Quinn, as well as John Marigan for sharing your views with us. I look forward to this fall and a spirited conversation with our community. So it is, uh, what time is it? 7:44 and I would take a motion to adjourn.
Good move.
Second.
And we have to do a roll call.
Counselor Goleb?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Master Tataro?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaus?
Yes.
Counselor Toronto?
Absolutely.
President Wondolowski?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Good night.